All right, let the record reflect that we have reconvened virtually with all members present. Bob Landrigan is absent, excused. He is still recovering from the from his injury from responding to an ambulance corps call of a couple of weeks ago. So our thoughts are with him on his recovery. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Just I am managing this meeting from away from Hartley Dodge tonight, so you have to bear with me periodically as I get my various screens in view. But I do want to take a moment. Sorry. Want to take a moment to recognize and remember a few people who we've lost over the past two weeks. Nina Alaco, age ninety-one, passed away on February twenty-sixth. Nina was born May fourteenth nineteen twenty-nine in Newark. The late Agostino and Michael Copo Bianco. She grew up in Newark, moved to Madison in nineteen fifty-seven with her husband, Michael Alaco. Before marriage to her husband, Michael, Nina worked at Allied Chemical as a phone operator. For youth, she was a bobby soxer going to Frank Sinatra concerts with her best friend, Dora. She grew up in a family of nine siblings. And after her mother's early passing, was raised by Philamina and Angelo Copo Bianco. Many friends and relatives would come to get Aunt Lena's meatballs, pot roast, and pasta. She enjoyed spending time with her family at holiday gatherings and at the family restaurant, Ange and Binns. She was survived by her children, Mary Ann, Christine, and Michelle, four grandchildren. She was predeceased by her husband, Michael Alaco, and her parents, Agostino and Michael. And Hannah Grasso died on February twenty-third at the age of ninety-six. She was a lifelong resident of Madison. Born to late Michael and Anna Citro. She grew up in Madison, was one of six children, lifelong parishioner of Saint Vincent Martyr Church. Hannah lived a life devoted to service, charity, and faithfulness. She was incredibly humble and always helped those in need. Hannah worked for many years preparing food in the cafeteria at the Chubb Insurance Company of in Warren, and also the public, Chatham Public School System, retiring over thirty years ago. In addition to her parents, Hannah was predeceased by her beloved husband, Amos, her two brothers, and a sister. She is survived by two sisters, Mary Geisler, Tatum, and Loretta Mellow. And we remember Elizabeth Tyree. Former lifelong Madison resident died on February twentieth at the age of ninety-four. She was affectionately known as Liz, born in Morristown in January of nineteen twenty-seven to the late Gus Reeves and Francis Bryant. She was one of three daughters. This was raised in Madison, received her early childhood education at Central Avenue Elementary School, graduated from Madison High School. She was married to George Tyree Senior, and they settled and raised their family in Madison as well. From this union, three children were born, two daughters, Elizabeth and Charlene, and one son, George Tyree the Third, who we remembered his passing at our last meeting. Elizabeth had a fulfilling career working for Great Stone Park State Hospital and the nutrition department before retiring in nineteen eighty-six. During her retirement, she enjoyed spending time at church, the American Legion, and shopping with friends, and she was also avid traveler. She was lifelong member of the First Baptist Church of Madison. She was loved by all and would be greatly missed. And I also want to take a moment to remember my father-in-law, James Hires, who died on March fifth at the age of ninety-six. In addition to being a father of the love of my life, he was another member of the Greatest Generation, serving in the Navy during World War Two. In his retirement, he returned to competitive swimming for the first time since college, winning medals up to the age of eighty-nine, including championships and masters and American swim meet. He was an inspiration to many, built up any room with a smile and a sense of humor. Even as Alzheimer's made his life more difficult, he could still bring a smile to anyone's face. Let us take a moment to remember Nina Alaco, Hannah Grasso, Elizabeth Tyree, and let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends they leave behind. Thank you. And I have a motion for the executive minutes of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This was already discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's like unanimous. And a motion for the regular minutes of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
I think we got eyes all around. Thank you. Welcome all. Here. Just a few announcements. I want to announce the employees of of the month for March. Michael Clancy and Nelson Jimenez from the Police Department have been selected for employees of the month of March. On February eighth, the officers were dispatched to the Madison High School tennis courts for a patient suffering a possible seizure. Patrolman Clancy was patrolling near the high school and arrived within seconds, assessed the patient, and determined he was in cardiac arrest. Bowman Clancy immediately notified Madison dispatch and began performing lifesaving measures. Bowman Jimenez arrived shortly afterward with the Madison Ambulance Corps personnel and began assisting with CPR. After the officers used the AED several times, the patient regained a pulse and began beating on his own. Patient was transported to the Morristown Medical Center where he continued on his recovery. Now I want to do a special proclamation and do especially as today is National or International Women's Day and recognize the great leadership women we have on our elected body here. But this is a proclamation to recognize National Women's History Month. Whereas March eighth, twenty-twenty-one is one hundred tenth International Women's Day, a global celebration of economic, political, and social achievements of women around the world, and a day to recognize obstacles women still face in the struggle for equal rights and the opportunities for their central role in creating positive change. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force and working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of a nation by providing a majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropical and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have served courageously in the military. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and the study of American history. Now therefore, I, Robert East County, the mayor of Burrow, Madison, on behalf of the government body on this International Women's Day hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty-one as National Women's History Month. Thank you for the great leadership of many. And now we will go to our reports from committees. Public Safety Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief DeFerson is pleased to announce the department is participating in the overdose fatality review team, which is being launched in Morris County through a partnership between Prevention is King and the Morris County Division of Public Health to combat the rise in overdose deaths. The OFRT has enlisted the support of multiple agencies and organizations to begin analyzing data, identifying regional trends, and evaluating strategies to address opiate overdose deaths in Morris County. This initiative is being funded by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention and New Jersey Department of Health under a successful model program developed in Maryland. OFRTs consist of local multi-agency, multi-disciplinary team of professionals in the position to conduct comprehensive yet confidential reviews of overdose deaths to ultimately improve response, prevention, treatment, and public awareness services. By fully understanding more about overdose deaths in the county, local health officials can more effectively direct policies, practices, and partnerships to prevent future overdoses and allocate prevention resources and services where they are most effective. And on Monday, March eighth, the Morris County Sheriff's Department Hope One unit will be at the Madison train station from nine AM to two PM. The Hope One is a mobile recovery access vehicle that offers critical support for persons struggling with addiction with the goals of preventing drug overdoses and deaths. Hope One travels twice a week to locations throughout Morris County, bringing services to people in need. A sheriff's officer, licensed clinician, and certified peer recovery specialists will understand the needs of those suffering with addiction staff for the vehicle. They help people access services and Narcan training. So they'll be there on on Monday. That's it.
Want me to give my report, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. From the Borough Clerks and Finance. As I reported at the last meeting, there is a bill down in Washington that could give Madison a significant amount of federal dollars for COVID relief. We are in touch with Mikey Sherrill's office on this, and it's still a fluid situation. We're not sure where it's going. And again, we're going to have our seventh discussion on the budget, the twenty-twenty-one budget, and I feel that we've been very open and transparent about this budget process. All our meetings are recorded, and there are links to the recordings along with the presentations that can be found on RoseNet. And tonight, Jim Burnett will present the budget as it is currently drafted. It still is open to changes depending upon what we learn from the federal level. And we haven't voted on anything yet, and we're not going to vote on it again tonight. But the chief operating financial officer does need to draft the official state budget document, and that is what he will be asking for tonight, and he will be going over the budget once again, and we will be plan to adopt the budget in seven weeks on April twenty-sixth. And it is also important to note that what we vote on, the council, is the municipal portion of the budget, which is twenty-one point eight percent of the total tax bill. Sixteen point two percent of your property taxes go to county. Sixty-two percent of your property taxes go to the school board. And each month, the CFO wires about three point six million dollars to our school board. Later this evening, you're going to hear about a new page on RoseNet where you can type in your twenty-twenty property tax bill and get the breakdown of your property taxes in twenty-twenty as well as twenty-thirteen. This council and past councils have worked hard to keep the property taxes down and the services up, and I'm proud to say that the municipal property taxes on an existing home have only gone up four percent over the last seven years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Grace Engineering and Health, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Department of Public Works, in preparation for the milling and overlay and paving of Woodland Avenue between Green and Luanica, Linden Lane, Independence Court, Barton Street, Serpico Lane, and North Street between East Street and Burnett, DPW has been raising manholes and preparing storm basins for paving work. Staff have been, DPW staff have been enrolled in training courses involving confined space training and bloodborne pathogens. Both salt domes have been fully resupplied due to heavy winter weather activity during the month of February. Weather permitting, the priority work for this week will be pothole repairs throughout the town and coordinating with the recreation director to start getting the playing fields ready for spring activity. The following maintenance work will be required. All baseball fields weeded, dragged, and lined. Bailey Ellard, Rosedale Soccer, Summer Hill Park, and the ice cream field after draining to be mowed and lined. Line court and install hoops at Del Barton Park. Coordinate with the O'Donnell landscaping on the installation of new backstops at Madison Junior School. Install new fencing at Lucy D. Myrtle and line basketball courts. Install pickleball storage shed at the Madison High School tennis court. Install twelve new lacrosse goals, six at the MRC and six at Bailey Ellard, and coordinate delivery of portable toilets to multiple playing fields. Engineering. Plans, specifications, and bid documents were advertised for Anthony Wayne Drive, Anthony Drive, and Wayne Boulevard. The scheduled public bid opening will be March thirtieth at eleven AM in the courtroom at Hartley Dodge. All qualified builder bidders are encouraged to submit bids to the Borough Clerks office in advance of the bid opening. A significant portion of the reconstruction projects include sidewalk replacement. The Madison Sidewalk Incentive Program includes a partial reimbursement for any sidewalk improvement undertaken by private property owners within the municipal right-of-way and a streamlined discount permit inspection process. For this calendar year, the reimbursement incentive is proposed to be increased to a minimum of forty dollars per square yard of sidewalk replaced, and the amount will be adjusted in subsequent years to promote continuing and significant assistance to private property owners for sidewalk repair by the Borough of Madison. Few other municipalities have this type of incentive, and we recommend our residents take full advantage of the Madison Core Sharing whenever necessary. The Complete Street Committee is scheduled to meet on March twenty-fourth at at seven thirty. Should any member of the public have concerns or suggestions regarding pedestrian, cyclist, or motor safety, please send an email to the Borough Engineer, Traffic Safety Officer, or any committee members for consideration on the agenda. The Madison Environmental Commission, the MEC's latest newsletter focuses on energy efficiency in winter. Tips are posted on RoseNet include a reminder that simple measures like window caulking can reduce home energy usage by as much as twenty percent. Shade Tree Management, the Purchasing Department, on behalf of Shade Tree Management, Board has sent out an RFQ for the purchase of one hundred and twelve trees. These trees will be planted by DPW this spring along Madison Streets and in Madison Parks. Responses are due back by March tenth. For the Health Department. The Health Department continues to follow up with those with outstanding two thousand twenty-one licensing issues. If you have not yet filled in your two thousand twenty-one animal food establishment or other required license, please do so as soon as you can. Onto COV, the COVID nineteen updates. As of today, Madison reports six hundred and thirty-three total confirmed cases of COVID nineteen. Of those, thirty are considered active. While case counts have seen an overall decline since January, putting into the post-holiday surge, in the last week or so, there has been a small uptick in cases in the state and county. We must continue to work together and practice social distancing, masking, and testing to continue to drive these numbers down. Vaccine sites in Morris County, including the regional site at Rockaway Mall, continue to serve residents, and Morris County continues to be a leader in the state for fully vaccinated residents per capita. More than sixty-one thousand residents have received final doses, and another hundred and seventeen thousand residents have received their first dose. In the last seven days, more than five hundred thousand doses have been provided statewide. In response to the specific needs of our senior population, New Jersey has established a specific dedicated hotline for those seventy-five years and older. Those seniors who need assistance registering for the New Jersey Vaccine Scheduling System, NJVSS, can call eight-five-six-two-four-nine-seven-oh-oh-seven. Agents can register seniors in NJVSS and assist them in scheduling an appointment at various sites, including dedicated senior locations at Walmart and ShopRite pharmacies. There remains a huge imbalance between those who are eligible and wish to get vaccinated and the number of appointments available. Vaccine supply continues to be a limiting factor for our vaccine efforts. However, the approval of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine and increased production of all three approved vaccines continue to ease the burden. A continuing reminder that nonessential interstate and international travel outside the region, Pennsylvania, New York, Delaware, Connecticut, is discouraged. Those that must travel should be sure to follow the appropriate testing and quarantine requirements upon their return. Visit rosenet.org for updates on the vaccination program, COVID-nineteen testing locations, and other pandemic guidance. Remember, the choices we make can have a major impact on the lives of our friends and neighbors. They can also impede our community's ability to operate schools, vital programs, public services, and stay Madison strong. So continue to wash your hands, use face coverings, practice social distancing, and stay home. Get tested if you don't feel well, and get vaccinated when you are eligible. Thank you.
And Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of the Downtown Development Commission is scheduled for Thursday, March eighteenth at seven fifteen via Zoom. Information about the May Day Art Contest was sent to the schools for distribution, and May Day itself will be held this year on Saturday, May first. The Madison's Farmers Market will open at Dodge Field on Thursday, May twentieth. The hours have been changed. The new hours are one to six PM. This year's Easter Fun Fest will be held on Saturday, April third, twenty-twenty-one, from eleven to twelve-thirty PM with social, eleven AM to twelve-thirty PM. With social distancing and proper protocol in place, we will have a table set up in town where individuals may guess the number of jelly beans, see the Easter Bunny, and turn in their Shelley the Egg participation cards to win a children's bike and other prizes. The Find Shelley the Egg Hunt will begin Saturday, March twentieth. Madison Loyalty Rewards Card, sponsored by Coldwell Banker, will be available for purchase at the Madison Pharmacy for ten dollars by April first. The Red Cross is sponsoring another blood drive at the Madison Community Arts Center in April. More details to follow. Planning for a new series, Bring Ahead with the Arts, a variety of entertainment, music, stand-up, children's theater is to be presented on Waverly Place Friday evening from April ninth through May twenty-eighth. If you're interested in sponsoring, please email info@madisonandjarts.org with a grant from Morris Arts, working with the Community Arts Center, is working with the Hidden Figures Project in conjunction with the Madison, the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts in June, to video musicians at the art center and allow for streaming. Madison Community Pool update, the madisonpool.org website is the hub for all your information. Please join today as they're trying to recover from a rough season last year. They are offering for members a kids camp that's a half-day camp that includes more than just swimming. So again, go to madisonpool.org, check it out, and submit your membership.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department. The Electric Department is continuing to install LED streetlight fixtures on all of our main roads. All of the commuter parking lots on Kings Road are now LED. I'm sorry, the lights in those parking lots are now LED. And the department is in the process of ordering an additional two hundred LED streetlight fixtures to continue the replacements. The standby crew responded to two power incidents. On February sixth, they were called out to a car utility pole accident on Central Ave. Where at the scene, they discovered that the utility pole was on top of the vehicle. The crew sprang into action and used the line truck to lift the pole off the car. The crew then removed the remnants of the broken pole and installed a new pole to restore power to all customers. So thanks to the crew for their great work in that recovery. From the Water Department, the department assisted with snow plowing on Monday, February twenty-second. Hopefully, we're at the end of that season, but I feel I shouldn't jinx it by saying something like that. The department also responded to a water leak on Oak Court. The leak was on the consumer side of the curb stop, so the crew advised the homeowner and shut off the water. That's all for utilities.
Thank you. And let's, any communications or petitions?
No. Hold on. Okay, unmuted. Yes, Mayor and Council received several emails from the following residents urging the repeal of the Senate Bill thirty-four fifty-four. Kathy Daly of West End, Stephen McCann of Chump Pike Road, Dennis Schreiber of Amelia Court, Allison Spatola of Rose Avenue, Tom Abruzzo Maple Avenue, Dr. and Mrs. Finnegan, Woodland Road, Cornelius Dwyer, Rosedale Avenue, and Barbara Puglisi of Ferndale Road.
Thank you. And now we move on to the first two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to the items that are on our agenda discussion and our resolutions, which I will outline shortly. When you are recognized, please state your name and address, and also the agenda item or the resolution you're speaking on. If you want to speak on other topics, you have to wait for our next discussion time, which will be a little bit later in the meeting. So this is again limited to the items I will outline shortly. I ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes, but as always, we give you a one-minute grace period, and you'll be asked to stop at four minutes and to make sure that we're not, no one is missed. Unlike when we're in public, where it might be impolite to raise your hand while someone is still speaking. Please raise your hand whenever you're ready. You can always take your hand down if you feel like you no longer need to comment. And here are the agenda items you may comment on. The twenty-twenty-one electric utility rebate program in our budget hearing. So that is a pretty broad topic that will allow you to comment on budget-related items. And here are the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda, which you may now also comment on, and you will understand what is in the consent agenda when we get to that part of the agenda. Resolution eighty-one, which is authorizing an agreement for real estate financial advisory services for affordable housing development with the S.S. Capital Advisors, and this is related to meeting our obligation for affordable housing. Resolution eighty-two is authorizing a contract with Clark, Kaiten, and Hints for professional services regarding the Madison Masonic Temple, and this is the, was the original Presbyterian Church and the oldest church building in Madison. And this is not to exceed thirty-four hundred twenty-six dollars and would come out of Open Space Recreation and Resort Preservation Crest Fund or any other account that may be deemed appropriate by the CFO. Resolution eighty-three is authorizing continuation of the electric utility rebate program, which is our discussion item number one. Resolution eighty-four is event permit to allow use of a public parking lot, number one, by Rotary Club of Madison for public shredding event on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Resolution eighty-five is authorizing the Farmers Market for twenty-twenty-one to be held at Dodge Field from May twentieth through November eighteenth on Thursdays, as has been Madison's tradition. Resolution eighty-six is awarding electric materials to Hurdle and Hughes in the amount of fifty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine ninety-nine dollars and Anexter Inc. in the amount of twenty-eight thousand one oh three. And this is funded through electric utility operations budget. And Resolution eighty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, is supporting corrective legislation regarding underage possession or consumption of illegal substances. And this is that the council will be sending to the both the state senate and assembly to corrective action on Senate Bill thirty-four fifty-four that right now would prevent parental notification of offenses created by minor children. And so this is to remove that and allow the police to do that, and so we can the children of our municipalities and communities across the state. Are those the items you may comment on? And Tom Harrenputus, you are first up. And you can unmute yourself. And again, name, address, and the item you are commenting on.
Okay, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello, Mayor and Council. Tom Harland Putus, twenty-seven, Palmeroy Road. Thanks again for, you know. Thanks again for, you know, having your Zoom meetings and everybody being there. So a couple of things I wanted to comment on with regards to the budget process, if it's okay. Let me see here, wrote them all down. So Councilwoman Bailey mentioned before that the potential federal funding to the state and then the state funding to the towns is, is, is under, still under deliberation, and there's a good possibility that these funds will come to the, at least to the, to the state. We don't know about Madison. So since you still have time before you finalize the town's budget, and maybe Mr. Burnett's already thought about this because he's, he's always a very forward thinker. Is it possible to build two budgets so that we could show the community what the budget would be like if we got whatever you're expecting, and you must have some idea in your head if if it's a million dollars or a thousand dollars? And then, and then also show a budget that doesn't have those funds included in the event that it doesn't happen before the April deadline. The other comment I wanted to make is, is there also some projections that we can make of what funds would go to the Board of Ed? Since Congresswoman Bailey indicated sixty-two percent of our our real estate taxes go to fund the schools. So that's also something to consider and hopefully, you know, the Borough Council and the Board of Ed are already collaborating and trying to decide what their budgets would be and how their budgets would affect our overall real estate taxes. Another thing I wanted to ask about, and you did present this, I think, previously, Mayor, maybe you can update me. Is there, are we making some capital, a new capital improvement schedule which might, you know, show some reduction in some of the projects that we want to have tabled for next year? Another thing too I want to talk about, please, the resolution eighty-three about the continuation of the electric utility rebate program. So that's fantastic, and you guys worked pretty hard at establishing that in the past. So in twenty-twenty, I understand that the electric and water revenues ended up pretty near your expectations prior to COVID. So is there a perspective on how the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one electric revenue would end up also? And if it's, if it's similar to twenty-twenty, then we won't be as stressed out to have some tax relief from the utility surplus. Then again, I spoke the last time about
No, one minute.
That's it, Mayor?
Well, you got one minute.
Okay, thank you for letting me know, sir. Let me see here, what else did I have on my notes? Yeah, I think that's pretty much it as far as, you know, the budget. I have to hear what Mr. Burnett's presentation is. It's always so thorough, and that gives everybody a lot of information. So thanks very much for your time. And if you have some responses to what I just mentioned, Mayor, I'd appreciate hearing back on anything that, right, if it's possible tonight, on anything that I just mentioned.
Thank you, Tom. Just a couple of quick things, and we will address some of these as we, as Jim does his presentation on the budget and also on the rebate. But of course, with federal aid is, is a moving target. We've heard all sorts of numbers, and we anticipate there will be two two levels of support that will help the residents of Madison, support that would go to municipality and a support that would go to the Board of Education. And some of the Board of Education support would be improvements on ventilation systems and so on. This is, as you know, a very complex bill and is already on its way back to the House, and so we don't know the final thing, but to your point of we have time and final budget, if we get significant aid would, needs to reflect that. And so our CFO is ready to act accordingly. Capital budget, and Jim can address this during the budget thing, but this year's capital budget does reflect a substantial reduction compared to previous years and but also reflection of if you reduce it too much, you put far greater burden on the outcome going years. And we'll be talking about the rebate program shortly. And now we'll bring up Kathy Daly.
Hi, Mayor. Kathy Daly, twenty West End Avenue. First of all, I want to express my condolences to you and your family. Very sorry to hear that news.
Thank you.
As you know, and as Clerk Elizabeth Osborne mentioned earlier, I contacted you and the council members last week about SB thirty-four fifty-four urging you to, or asking you to pass a resolution to urge the repeal of that law. That is the law that signs, that Governor Murphy signed into law that two weeks ago that prevents law enforcement from communicating with parents of children who are found using or in possession of marijuana. And in my opinion, as I mentioned to you, I feel that that far oversteps the New Jersey voters' intent when they approved a constitutional amendment to legalize marijuana last fall. And I saw that you added the resolution eighty-seven twenty-twenty-one to your agenda for tonight. And at first, I was very encouraged to see that you had added that to the meeting's agenda. And I, reading the resolution, your proposed resolution, I'm very glad to see that it urges corrective action on the parental notification restrictions within that law. That was one of the objections that I also have against the new law. You have not included in your version of the resolution, however, you haven't included a request to change the part of the law that makes it a crime for law enforcement to initiate a search based on the odor of alcohol or marijuana or even based on unconcealed possession of either pot or booze. That leads me to believe, because you're not contesting it, it leads me to believe that the Madison Borough Council members are okay with that part of the law, and that concerns me. So under the new law, if an underage person lights a joint or even hides marijuana in their pocket, the police cannot surge, search that underage person. If an officer smells alcohol, she can't search the child. It's a violation of that child's civil rights. So if the officer initiates a search, that officer can be charged with a crime. This part of the new law achieves the exact opposite of public safety. This type of legislation, the type of legislation that aims to punish law enforcement officers who try to actually enforce the law, that will very soon result in fewer people willing to step forward to serve our New Jersey communities, including communities like Madison, as law enforcement officers. In your resolution, you haven't included any request to correct this part of the law. So the only conclusion that I can come to is that you're okay with an officer being charged with a crime if the officer initiates a church, a search based on actually seeing or smelling illegal substances. So I just asked, I just want to be absolutely clear that I'm understanding how you feel about this. And I also want others who are listening to this call tonight to understand how, how you, where you all stand on this particular issue. And for that reason, I, I hope, and I specifically request that when you're talking about the resolutions that you each weigh in on discussion of this resolution, instead of just voting on it as part of the consent agenda without discussion. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Kathy. And as we will have the option to discuss if council so desires, and we appreciate your input on that. This is a very interesting time and you know, obviously, a lot of times legislation doesn't get it right and things need to be corrected. And seeing no other hands currently raised, I close this part of the agenda. And we now move on to. All right. Tom, you got, you got in just under the wire. Please, again, a reminder, please, if you want us to have your hand up, but I didn't go through the full statement to close, so we will get on board.
Okay, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Tom Abruzzo, Maple Avenue, Madison. I just want to piggyback on the comments made by Kathy Daly. And also, unfortunately, I know she has, I have not read specifically what you guys have put out today, so I do apologize about that. But I also wanted to note that the Sheriff's Association of New Jersey came out with a statement today. It was in tapping into Madison stating that the Sheriff's Association of New Jersey is urging the governor and state legislature to quickly pass legislation that would amend the decriminalization statute. Statement here, the voters decided that cannabis should be legal. However, for the safety and well-being of our children, intervention strategies should never be halted, said Morris County Sheriff James Gannon. The threat of criminal charges against police if they intervene is extremely disturbing. So there's obviously more, but obviously a long statement here, and I just want to combine emphasis with what Ms. Daly just stated regarding a very, a very firm and tough statement here. And I think, I think agreeing with the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Department of New Jersey would be, would be a very very smart thing in this. And a very sensible thing, given what was currently put out in this, in this law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then anyone else wishing to be heard, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we now move on to our agenda discussions and our rebate program. Rachel, you can be that one off.
So the targeted electric utility rebate program offers a two-hundred-dollar rebate on the electric bill to customers who are full-time residents in the borough of Madison who meet certain income requirements for low-income individuals and families. Last year, we, in twenty-twenty, three-hundred-and-forty-three income-eligible residents were approved for this two-hundred-dollar rebate on the electric bill for a cost of sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred dollars. The program guidelines and application are enclosed in a mailing every year as part of our electric bill. And my recommendation, based on the past success of this program and the tangible financial benefit that we can offer to residents, is to authorize continuation of this rebate program.
Thank you. And this has been a very successful program, and obviously not too many communities can do this, and I believe we're probably the, of the municipally-owned utilities. I don't know if any others are doing this. The questions or discussion, this would be, Austin?
Yeah, we, I just want to confirm we've set aside money in the budget for this.
And the CFO was nodding his head.
Okay.
For those at home who will not be able to see that.
Right, Mayor.
Okay, so yes, confirms that we've got money set aside in the budget to cover that. All right, and this, again, this will be resolution eighty-three on the consent. And so now, without any further discussion, we'll go on to the budget here and our CFO.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to share the screen and start the presentation. There is a, a number of slides on here that I'm not going to talk to, are here for informational purposes for people who want to know more. And as you can see, there's forty-three slides. I don't want everybody here to muddle the night. So but we'll, we'll be focusing on a couple of different items. We'll be talking, I'll be presenting on the schedule, strategic planning guidelines, alternate budget formats, property tax breakdown, revenues, transparency, and the impact on tax appeals. As my liaison, Councilwoman Bailey said, there's no budget vote tonight. This is just so I can start drafting a budget. And you know, I may end up answering Mr. Harlan Putus's questions as I go along to that. And so I'll focus on those as they kind of come through the process here. This is the hearing schedule. We've had a number of hearings already. This one was actually added because of the meeting on March, the prior meeting went, went too long at the end of February, February twenty-second. So what's included in this budget, there's kind of the concerns, and I just put good stuff. I guess I'm English there, but the concerns are municipal revenues being off a million, a two-percent tax increase on existing properties. This number could be reduced if we get federal stimulus dollars. And to that point, it is literally the changing of three numbers. So I can, what I need is, is the ability and to go ahead and move forward with the rest of the budget, which is how much we have put in for sewage treatment, for the rock salt, for staff salaries, for the operations and insurance and all the other items. They are literally hundreds and hundreds of numbers that go in the budget. But if we were to change based on the stimulus dollars, it would probably only result in two or three numbers to change. So that kind of answers one of Mr. Harlan Putus's questions about having two budgets. We'll have one, but we can quickly change it if needed. Concerns, also this budget, and we talked about this before, includes a hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar increase in sewage treatment costs, over a hundred-thousand dollars increase in pension costs, and our capital funding is down by seven-hundred thousand. The good stuff in the budget is that we all other operating lines that we control were reduced. There is a reduction in general capital. That's not, we should remove that. But GVR property continues to be the largest taxpayer. We anticipate over five million in capital spending in twenty-twenty-one, even with a reduction in the in the amount of capital that we're dedicating this year to the capital improvement fund. Funding for water and electric will be a full funding for capital. There'll still be, there's still a two-million-dollar electrical dividend. There's a hundred thousand dollars, as Councilwoman Bailey was asking, and you just advanced for the electric utility rebate relief. There's a continuation of rebate for seniors, and there is one million set aside, which we have already set aside for the water meter replacement program. And there's no charge and service to residents. That's kind of a summary of all the documents. When I'm, I'll talk a few more minutes, and then I'm just going to breeze through the schedules. I'm not going to go through the various numbers baked within the budget. They'll be for people to look at later. As we reported before, there's a million-dollar drop in municipal revenue in twenty-twenty. Permit fees, court fines, interest, and construction code fees are some of the larger ones. We don't see any of this coming back right now in, in, in twenty-twenty-one. So that's a major concern. Four million dollars dropped to less than three million dollars in revenue for that line item in the budget. So that's, that's super, super concerning. These are the budget schedules. I'm not going to go into details on them. There is an alternate format that we always present at this point in time, based on strategic planning guidelines and the good work of that committee back in two thousand and fourteen. Also, this budget flow document, which, if you're a visual person, may be able to help you better understand how the interplay of the utility budget is with the municipal budget. Something that our pal put together. And we also have schedules for the electric utility and the water utility. Not much has changed on any of those since the previous reporting. We also want to first pay tribute to Penn Wolkowitz and also just acknowledge the excellent work that he and the Strategic Planning Committee did to come up with guidelines and metrics that we track on an annual basis. They, there's a description of what the strategic planning guidelines do here, which I'm not going to repeat. But I can say from a commentary standpoint, we are intentionally deviating from some of the guidelines due to the financial stress caused by COVID-19. But the point of these guidelines is to be able to look at them and track the trends and and know that we're potentially deviating from a few. And so hopefully, in the next two or three years, we will be back in compliance. These are the various guidelines. I'm not going to go into details, but the amount of transfer from the water electric utility is higher than the guidelines suggest. And that is kind of a you know, it's kind of a, an existential question from a budgeting standpoint, one that the Strategic Planning Committee spent a lot of time on. What's the appropriate amount and what is too much? And their guideline was twenty-two percent as a chief financial officer. I think it's important to not have all your eggs in one basket, and if you have all your eggs in the utility basket and there's revenue problems there, it's problematic. So I, you know, I'd be cautious about that. And continuing heavy reliance on electric utilities.
Just, just so it's not missed, though, that the should not exceed twenty-two percent, and the recommendation for this budget is twenty-two-point-four percent.
Yes, correct, Mayor. It's not a, not a huge, a huge deviation from that. So I'm not going to lose sleep over it. No one, no one should. Thank you, Mayor. And anybody jumping in anytime if I'm talking too fast. The, the second one is the amount of capital improvement fund, how much money we're setting aside for the capital improvement fund as a percentage of the budget. We are intending as a percentage of the budget, we are intentionally setting aside less money this year in the capital improvement fund compared to years past, you can see we're at 3.8 million, and then 3.5, now 2.8. We're doing that because that's the way we're balancing the budget with the loss of the revenue. So our hope is that we will get that number back up in the upcoming years. These are other guidelines, they're all compliant, so there's no concerns there, people can review them if they have any questions, they can follow up with me. Like to talk for a few minutes about our property tax breakdown and how COVID has impacted other municipalities. Our breakdown is advertised and promoted in various materials, because we want people to understand that while we send out 100% of the tax bill, not 100% of the money is coming to us, this shows the breakdown of that. What's real neat is that we created a calculator this year where people can go in and actually type in their taxes and get the breakdown, and if I'm real good at this, Michael, I'm going to try to stop sharing one screen and share another screen if that's okay, and actually go into the tax calculator. I hope I'm going to do this right, I am not strong with it, oh, grass, here. I think it's in the finance department. Tax calculator, so this is the screen we were just showing. Clicking on here will, will take you to the calculator. And it's real cool, if you say, oh, what were my property taxes this year? I think they were $17,000. You type in $17,000, and it calculates, here's your breakdown of those taxes for 2020 of $17,000. Went to the county, the board of that, and the borough. Then it goes backwards, using math, I think Mrs. Volker from my math class will be proud that we're able to pull this together, it's real neat. It shows what the borough's property tax was for this house, that it was $14,800 in 2013. And really what we're trying to do is show, without, you know, pointing fingers at anyone else, that the borough's property tax on this house, it was $17,000. The borough's portion, municipal portion of property tax went 30, 3,500 to 3,700, it was up $144. Taxes in total were up over, that didn't go great, taxes were, total were up $2,000. Only the municipal portion was up 144, so when people are concerned about their tax bill, that's just something I want to point out, and everyone is welcome to go on there and play around with it. Thank you, Michael, for making that cool little widget on our, on our, on our website.
Very neat tool.
Going to go back to the presentation now, Michael. Boy, I feel like we're really doing well with the technology there. So you've seen articles, I'm just repeating them, how COVID really has had a significant damaging effect on towns, which is why there's federal stimulus dollars potentially coming our way. Town of Garfield had to borrow, along with dozens and dozens of other towns in the state of New Jersey, couldn't have enough money in the bank, literally ran out of money, couldn't pay the bills, had to issue special debt to pay their bills. Maplewood is starting out at an 8% increase in their property taxes this year. We know that they're, from talking to them, they're now up to 9%. So just wanting people to understand the other towns and the challenges that they have. And this was something that was fun, that I put together with the help of Chrissy Mahler, our tax collector. This shows the change in property taxes from 2013 to 2020 for the municipal portion. Remember how I just showed that tax collector and how for a $17,000 property tax bill, the borough went up $144? Over this period of time, seven, eight years, the Borough of Madison's taxes on the municipal side in total only went up 4%. These towns, Chatham Borough went up 9%, Florham Park 10.5%, Mountain Lakes 23.5%. Mountain Lakes just came out with a 1.4% reduction in their property taxes, and I felt bad, I'm like, wow, how are they doing it? We can't do it. I looked at this, and I said, well, that's why, because they increased property taxes so much over the prior seven years, we're just giving a little bit back. Berkeley Heights, New Providence, and Summit, a little bit of a challenging calculation to do, Mayor, because of equalization of taxes when reassessments occur, but these are the correct, 100% correct numbers for those towns. So we couldn't include everybody if they had a rebound. There was some conversation at prior meetings about transparency, so we wanted to add some additional information on fund balance and capital reserves. All this information, in terms of transparency, is available on RosenNet, and the borough has various fund balances and reserves, including surplus or free balance, fund balance in municipal water and electric. We also have capital balances in those three entities. We also have an electric utility substation reserve and a tax appeal reserve. We also don't have certain reserve funds that other towns have, like a snow removal reserve or an accrued balances reserve, that accrued balances would help pay as employees retire for their accrued, accrued times. All of these balances mentioned above have dropped or are projected to drop over the coming years. And we're monitoring them, it's important for us to monitor them, but that's concerning as a CFO that all of those are dropping, so that'll be something that we'll be monitoring seriously. Free balance, which is municipal surplus balances or fund balances, will be have dropped significantly, they dropped 2.7 million over the last two years from 10.4 to 7.2 million. Garfield didn't have enough money to pay their bills in surplus at all, so they had to go and borrow the money. Municipal capital balances are dropping, so Thomas or Mr. Harland Pootis talked about our budget, here's a kind of a snapshot of all of our capital budgeting that we're looking to do over the next four years. And this year, we're hoping to do 3.8 million, we've already authorized the road programs. We're only putting in this budget 2.8 million, but we're spending 3.8, oops, we're spending 3.8 million. So that's going to reduce the balances, we had a balance of 1.6 million in capital. In the capital improvement fund, we're going to put in 2.8, we're going to take out 3.8, we're going to be down to $620,000. So that's a significant drop. There was a significant drop from this year, and then another drop of $1 million from the beginning of this year to the end of this year, so I just wanted people to understand, there's this discussion that we have, you know, pots of money everywhere. All of those funds have important purposes, like capital. And in this particular instance, this is dropping significantly. We are going to have some real serious questions on these in the out years, and I think everyone should understand that we vote on, the council looks at a five-year capital plan, but they don't vote on that specific spending, they vote on the spending on individual ordinances as the projects come up. So we may not be able to fund everything in the out years, depending on what happens in the budget in the coming years. Electric utility substation reserve is currently at 1.35 million, this was intended to fix our substations. It did go up because we didn't spend any of it, we put 150,000 in this year. However, council's aware of this, but the public isn't aware of this. There is a significant item that's occurring where we are negotiating our interconnection agreement with First Energy, the old JCPN L company. And First Energy has the authority to demand certain upgrades to our substation distribution system, including power factor correction and under-frequency load shedding. The interconnection agreement must be resolved in the next few months, and then after it's resolved, and we're very close with the negotiations on completing it. Once, once the agreement is executed, we're only going to have a certain amount of time, a year, a year and a half, to do those required upgrades. And right now, there's a rough estimate of those upgrades being 100, or $820,000. So this reserve, which was intended for substation replacement and repairs, is now has to be used for the specific equipment in our distribution system and in, to, to be in compliance with the interconnection agreement. So this will be another one of those balances that will be dropping, anticipated dropping by over 500,000 by 2022. So that is another line item in the, the various funding areas that we have that's dropping. Talk for a few minutes about tax appeals. As we had mentioned previously, I believe Councilwoman Bailey also mentioned it, there are serious concerns about tax appeals coming down the road, especially when it comes to office markets. There was an excellent article in the New York Times about how empty office buildings are putting big squeezes on city budgets. And a lot of people don't know it, because you don't get in here unless you run the 5K races or you work there, but there are some significant buildings in Gerolda Farms that generate significant property taxes. How do property, how do tax, what about our tax appeal reserves? It's our final bucket of reserve funds that we have. Right now, we have $609,000, we put $75,000 a year in it. And it's important to note that property owners that win an appeal typically receive a cash refund. And that's not a problem if it's an appeal for a residential house, it's a big problem when it's an appeal for a large office building. And all of our office buildings have appeals that, at least for 2020, some go back many years, and they're certainly going to appeal their taxes again in 2021. So we're going to have multiple years of appeals from these office buildings. Office buildings are appraised based on occupancy, and occupancy is dropping significantly. These properties pay, and you'll see in a minute, close to $5 million a year in property taxes, and if they win appeals of 10 or 15% of their reduction of their property taxes, not unreasonable based on just what these articles are saying in here, that it's, it's feasible that that entire tax appeal reserve will, will be used resolving those, those, those appeals. Here are the eight largest property taxpayers. Their eight properties pay 8.6 total property values in Madison, which is, our property taxes in Madison, which is pretty amazing. The Gerolda Five, they're all listed here. I want to note that the GVR property is still the third-largest taxpayer, and they cannot appeal their taxes, so that's a good situation. The bad situation is Atlantic Health. Atlantic Health built that new building on the corner of LaMonica and Madison Avenue, and there is a bill that Governor Murphy signed into law, which will allow Atlantic Health to say that that is, potentially say that that is a hospital facility, should be not-for-profit, and we will lose $380,000 a year in taxes if we lose that. If we lose that case, and I think the legal, we, we don't have a very good legal foot to stand on for that. That's a significant loss, as you can imagine, on the taxes that are generated from the largest taxpayers. Earlier, I said $5 million in, in taxes. If you add these six highlighted properties up, that comes to 4.9 million. If we lose 10% of that, we could lose a significant amount, we could lose up to 20% potentially in those property taxes, that I think is kind of the worst-case scenario. So we could lose $1 million in annual property taxes from these businesses, and there are others that have appeals, the Stop &amp; Shop has a deal going on for five years. On top of that, we could lose $380,000 from Atlantic Health. We could lose one, up to $1.4 million in revenue from these properties. And I want to go backwards and note that we don't get any money back from the county or from the schools when we settle an appeal and pay the taxpayer back. We have to pay the entire amount. That's just the way it works. So it makes it more challenging for us, it's why we have, why we have to have a tax appeal reserve. So inside, this is a summary page, it's just basically what I just said, I don't want to have to repeat it. Administration's comments, and then wrapping up here, and then we'll be ready for questions in a minute, Mayor. We're not asking council for, for a vote. Numbers can change between now and budget introduction. I think it's really important to say that we had ample reserves, and we didn't have to be like Garfield, we could survive and weather this storm and not have to take draconian measures and have an 8% increase in property taxes like Maplewood, or have a, have to borrow $2 million like Garfield. This is an austere budget that offers a balance between providing full services and dealing with the financial impacts of the pandemic. We know about the stimulus funds and will, will be monitoring that and working towards a solution for that for council, when the numbers are, are known, every few hours, we hear a different number on that. I mentioned all of these items as concerns, so I'm not going to repeat them. But unfortunately, there are other concerns on top of the items that I've spoken about already, about tax appeals and surplus balances and, or fund balances dropping, the loss of revenue from Atlantic Health, and the need to upgrade the substations. We have an affordable housing mandated obligation. I hope we get the tax credits, I really do, and we're working exceptionally hard to make sure we do that, but that is a potential liability if we don't get those tax credits that we have to use taxpayer dollars to build that affordable housing. We have seven collective bargaining agreements that expire at the end of this year, and that is an exposure, because we don't know what the costs are going to be in the out years. Starting in 22, 2022, we have an annual debt payment that we're going to have to pay on sewage upgrades of over $300,000. That's a new $300,000 bill that's going to be tacked on to that budget, and there, there's not much that we can do about that. As a reminder, when we increase property taxes by 2%, we generate $300,000, so if we were to pass this tax increase this year, in my mind, I think it's appropriate to say, well, that will pay the debt down for the next 30 years for the sewage upgrades. So we just found out, unfortunately, and I haven't mentioned this to anybody, except I think I might have mentioned it to the mayor, we just found out on Wednesday, last Wednesday, that our workers' comp insurance could be going up significantly, anywhere from 90 to 300,000 a year, depending on certain legislation, that was another not good situation, that not good development. Here's the 2%, when we increase property taxes by 2%, it gets us $300,000, that's the schedule. And I do want to end on a positive note, that keep in mind that the borough's done an exceptional job keeping property taxes down for that average resident, only 4%, only $100. And Madison offers tremendous services which are listed here. And if we were to do a 2% tax increase, that average home would pay 400, or $4.20 a month, which is less than the vent H I T that I get at Starbucks every day, so. Mayor, with that, I will you want me to keep the budget presentation up while we field questions, Mayor?
Probably, because I guess, a, a lot of very good information, and a reminder to the public that two things that this meeting, as always, is recorded, and so you can know when it's posted. Watch Jim go through all this, and again, and the PowerPoint, it will be posted separately, so you can go at your own pace on side-by-side, I just, before handed off to council, I just want to emphasize your comments about the office space that this, not, not to be lost on this, this is, the office space scenario is not a temporary thing, this is not going to go away, or the anticipation is, this is not going away at the end of the pandemic, and a return to the previous economy. That lessons learned is the fact that people can be productive at working from home. And many offices will be doing a 50/50, so after employees come in on a daily basis and half are working from home, which means potential for an, an office glut that hasn't, probably never been seen across this country, not, you know, previously, it's been a suburban glut versus an urban glut, this will be across the board. We had one of our Gerolda Farms tenants that told me that May is their plan to return workforce to the offices, and they will be doing the 50/50 going forward, but not a single employee is coming back to Madison, they will be working at another site, and that will be with a time left in their lease, so they will, they will try to look for a sublease or walk away from it, that's, that's the great exposure there. So other comments, Deb?
All right, so as usual, I have a ton of questions or clarifications, starting with slide four, and I promise they're not one for every slide. Don't worry, and you, you And you, you did change this from the time I looked at it last, but I just want to make sure because I'm still not seeing it. There is money set aside for COVID relief in the budget, which as far as I'm concerned, goes in the good stuff in the budget column. There we go. Okay, so the electric utility rebate is the, is the COVID relief for now. Okay. And then on slide eight, just for clarity, because I always screw this up. The money here is in millions, which I'm sure indicates somewhere, or maybe it's just me that always forgets.
It doesn't, I'm sorry.
But what is the 1.8 million in uncollectible tax reserves? What does that mean?
So as we talked about, and as everyone knows, we collect the property taxes for everyone. We collect them for the county, we collect them for the school board, and we collect them for the borough. We have to collect about $70 million this year. We don't issue $70 million in bills because some people won't pay. And we need to, we need the $70 million because we have to pay 3.6 million a month to the Board of Ed. We have to pay a certain amount of money to the county. So there is a, a reserve that is added into the budget. So our tax bill will be 71.8 million. And that reserve allows, gives us breathing room if for some reason our tax collection rate goes down. And if our tax collection rate doesn't go down, we've been fortunate that it hasn't. That's, that's funds that go into municipal fund balance and are just used in the following year for tax.
Got it.
That's, that is.
And look, I'm going to skip all the way to slide 27. So the, the two questions, what is the power factor correction? And then what is required equipment under frequency load shedding, which sounds a whole lot like rolling blackouts?
Well, number, you're exactly right about B. Power factor correction is the fact that when large loads turn on or turn off, a big air conditioning unit turns on or turns off, it draws or stops drawing energy from our system. And that can cause fluctuations of the power factor in our system, which is bad for our system, bad for our substation, and even bad for upstream. So just like a charger has a little capacitor in it that's holding electricity, we will be installing capacitors throughout our distribution system that will hold electricity and will effectively dampen the fluctuation of the power factor when large loads are being turned on or turned off. That is what power factor correction is. And the required equipment for under-frequency load shedding is exactly what you said, Deb. It is to help avoid what happened in Texas. We are members of PJM, the Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland grid. It's much larger than that now, but that's the name of our regional transmission organization. And there's a number of generators within the system. We're very fortunate that we're not like Texas. We're not an island. We can get energy all the way from Ohio and Mississippi if we need to, and all the way up from New England and all the way down from Florida. We can get energy if there's a critical situation that's going on. However, if a critical situation does start to happen and the grid needs to shed load, they are authorized by FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, to have the ability to automatically shut off certain load. And they want the ability to do that here in Madison on an automatic basis. An event like that hasn't happened for 15 years. So it's an extremely unlikely event. But the concept is that there might be a temporary partial outage in Madison for 45 minutes to an hour, as opposed to a disastrous power outage where equipment fails and generation fails. And then the grid has basically collapsed, and it takes days and days and days for the grid to come back. So that is, that is what the required equipment for under-frequency load shedding is.
And that we don't have control over that. PSENG or JCPL will come to us and say, by the way, we're doing this just so you know it's happening.
Yeah, and hopefully someone's around to take the call. It's going to be my cellphone number and a few other calls. Jimmy Matinas and a few others that are going to get that call and say, hey, we're doing this indefinitely.
All right, and then on slide 32. Just to clarify, when you say, what is it, the second-to-last bullet? All of the large office buildings already have pending tax appeals. Is that, that's not just Gerald the, you mentioned Stop and Shop, but are there others that it might be as well?
Yeah, Realogy on, which is, I believe, right, it's our second-largest property taxpayer. Realogy has appeals for definitely last year, maybe the year before, and I'm sure they'll be coming in again for the 2021 year.
All right, and then the last one on slide 38. I guess one is a comment, and I think you actually answered the other one. The first one, the affordable housing, we only have been given by Fair Share two tax credit rounds. So we have this year's tax credit and next year's tax credit. And if we, for some reason, don't get them, then we're on the hook for whatever is left, correct?
I'm nodding my head and realizing that people can't see that. So yes, that is the correct answer. In our negotiated settlement with Fair Share Housing Center, we have two bites at the apple for, for getting tax credits. So fortunately, we do have money in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and there are potential of the solutions. But clearly, the best one for the taxpayers of Madison is that we are successful in getting the right percent.
And then I guess my last comment is thank you for this budget and for your prior years because with COVID, we did manage to help our businesses, help our residents stay afloat during what was a very crazy year. And hopefully, things will start to settle down at least a little bit. So thank you.
Other questions, comments? Rachel and then Ostry?
Jim, thank you for this presentation. I think it was very thorough, and you've hit on a lot of concerns that have been raised, questions that have come up in public meetings. And I appreciate the, the, both the breadth and the detail that you provided here. And I just want to say again what the mayor did, which is that all of these presentations are available on Rosnet under annual budget process. And I myself refer to them often. I send the links to residents who have questions. And anyone who wants to know more should certainly avail themselves of these. These are like the Bible of how we put our budget together. And I think it's great that Madison is so transparent and provides this information to the public. I just wanted to ask if you could give an example. I think it was probably one of the very first pages of the presentation where you said, "All of the line items that we, in quotes, 'control' are going down." Can you tell me what it means that we can control versus not control a line item and give some examples of that?
I was under the good stuff. I really had a failure in English this afternoon when I changed. We talked about redesigning it. I should have got a better solution for that. So it's under the, it's under the good stuff. All the operating lines we control were reduced. We don't control pension. It's, it's amazing. We literally get a one-page bill for the police and fire pensions and for the P E R's pension. Of a million dollars, you know, I just, that just blows my mind. We don't control our insurance costs. We somewhat control the sewage treatment costs, but that's a little bit out of our control. When I say controlling, I mean 100% control. And actually, with the sewage treatment costs, we don't control that because the upgrades that we're doing are D E P mandated upgrades. So we're being forced to do the improvements at the joint meeting sewage treatment processing plant that are causing the increase in sewage treatment costs this year and also the $300,000 in debt in the out, in the out years. We worked hard with our department heads, and I really want to tip my hat to all of them for working with us on their budget to make sure that we could control operating costs wherever we could. That is, that is an area that we control. So hats off to the department heads for what they're able to do to help us bring a budget in that is not a Maplewood budget, that's up 8%. That is a budget that has allowed us over the last eight years to only increase by 4%. Able to give that seven, eight years of tax relief, in my opinion, to the residents of town, at least on the municipal side, due to good stewardship by all of the department heads.
Thanks, Jim.
And Ostry?
Okay, thank you. Jim, thanks so much. You've worked so hard on this. Page 36, or slide 36, a summary. This looks like what keeps you and Ray up at night. So on this, can you explain when you say the other property taxpayers in town will have to make up the difference?
This is the thing, the tax appeals are, are, are my, our biggest concern from Ray and I. I think the revenues will eventually come back. I think people will eventually go to New York City. I think the court revenues will eventually come back. I think construction will, will improve on the residential side. And we've got some potential properties that are going to be developed over the coming years, on Kings Road, on Lincoln Place and others. So there'll be some, some construction there. But to have 8.6% of the taxes paid for by eight properties and to lose $380,000 here and to potentially lose $100,000 from Realogy, $100,000 from Allergan, $60,000 from Gerald the Seven. There's, we have no solution to, to offset that. And we have no real way of winning that in tax court right now. We all know that office space has just created. It just has really going to be a challenge. It's going to be a challenge for years to come. We are fortunate that we are diversified. We have plenty of properties that are commercial downtown. We have plenty of properties that are office space, and we have plenty of properties that are residential. But to answer your question, it's always good to kind of think of the Ostriville that we talked about a few meetings ago, where there are four properties in town and they're each paying $10 in property taxes, four homes in town, and then there's a piece of land and that land is built, and a home goes on top of it, and that home pays property taxes. So everyone else's, the four original homes, property taxes can stay the same, and all of the increase can be paid by that fifth home. The exact opposite would be happening here in this particular situation. It would almost be like there's five homes in Conleyville, and two of the homes went away. Or one of the homes just didn't exist anymore. The bill has to be split up and paid by the remaining homes. And this, or another way to think of it is you have 10 people to dinner out at your favorite restaurant in town, and all of a sudden, someone gets up and leaves and doesn't pay their part of the bill. The other nine people have to pick up the balance. That's what's going to happen with our tax appeals. And that's what's going to happen with, that's my biggest concern, what's going to happen with the residential side. Hopefully, it's, it's our biggest concern. I don't, I can't even say hopefully the impact won't be a challenge. It will be a challenge.
Okay, so my other question, I have one more question. Which is, so I wonder if we get the COVID aid relief? And then it would be possible to go to 0% tax increase. What numbers would you, would you be changing then?
So I'm sympathetic to Mr. Harlan Pootis and the people who want to have a 0% tax increase. I would prefer to not do a 0% tax increase, but I understand the challenges in this day and age. As I said before, there are literally hundreds and hundreds of numbers that I have to put in a state budget document. I'd hold it up, but we're projecting the presentation. I would change two numbers or three numbers in there. I'd change the amount that we generate for property taxes. I would reduce the amount that we use in capital that we, that we're going, on the appropriation side, the amount that we're going to set aside in capital. And I would consider increasing municipal sort of fund balance that was used off the budget. Those would be the three numbers, and it literally is only three numbers out of hundreds and hundreds of numbers. So if council says, yeah, Jim, go ahead and craft the budget, we could still have the flexibility down the road to make changes. And it's not an incredible challenge for me to make those changes. It's something that could be done relatively easily. So I can get cracking on the hundreds and hundreds of other numbers and then see what happens with the federal stimulus money.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to reinforce another comment you made, Jim, about the balance that Madison has between commercial, you know, a downtown and residential. You know, to compare ourselves with one of our neighbors, Farm Park. You know, often people say, well, the taxes are so much lower in Farm Park because they have a high commercial ratable. And I think they are facing some major challenges. Hotel taxes have disappeared, the Park Avenue, and not to forget about Columbia and Bearden and Hanover Road. You know, it's just that the list of the shift there is, would make my head spin if I was in that neighboring town. So, you know, Madison is...
That makes some point, Mayor, and I would also point out, Parson City is going to probably be even more challenged. They had a 6% property tax increase last year for the municipal side of their budget. You know, all of Route 10, right? I mean, so much office space in Parson City and not a one office space like we have here in Madison.
Any other questions or Rachel again?
I just want to, this is because we are thinking with some alarm about the future of Gerald the Farms. I just want to mention that in the, in the process of creating the new master plan for Madison last year, the future of office spaces was brought up frequently during the public engagement process. There was a stakeholder discussion group that was the business, commercial, and institution stakeholder that gathered to provide feedback. And, and last year, participants commented that the demand for office space is fluctuating and might decrease overall. So I, you know, there's, there's, there's a tone of doom, I guess, in our conversation here. But I just want to stress that the borough, both in terms of, you know, the planning board adopting the master plan and the many residents and business owners and volunteers who contributed to the master plan, were really thinking ahead to the future of Gerald the Farms, thinking about office park reuse strategies, ways that the buildings might be repurposed. And I think, just think it's important to mention that Madison isn't like sitting back just waiting for the sky to fall down on Gerald the. And I encourage people that are hearing this and feeling like pessimistic to take a look at the land use element of the master plan and hopefully invite the public to engage in some, you know, thinking about what Gerald the Farms can become and, you know, what the future holds as we strive to preserve the open spaces there, while coming up with appropriate new uses that are sustainable and financially and environmentally sustainable. So not exactly a budget topic, but one in that we do need to be proactive in thinking about the future of that very special piece of property and how it can continue to be a resource for us environmentally, financially, and as an open space asset to the borough.
I was having trouble unmuting myself. Very good point that, you know, so much is interplying, and we, budget is just part of the whole forward thinking that we always need to have. Any other comments? And then I will, we'll talk about marching orders, but Jim?
Just before I get my marching orders, while I have the microphone, I want to wish my mother-in-law, Jeri, in a speedy recovery from her knee replacement surgery that she had earlier today. It's always good to schmooze your mother-in-law.
And we'll recommend...
Scored two points.
And please tell her to go to a certain point in the, in the meeting to hear that so she doesn't have to listen to everything else.
She'll listen to the whole thing.
Okay, that's good. So, so I think what we, I'm hearing from the comments that there's a comfort level with what you presented so far, but a feeling that if federal aid does come, that we should, that should be recognized in the budget. I also want to say that I was in contact with the governor's office earlier today because I've been asking them about whether the deadline for adoption of municipal budgets will be pushed back because there's a whole lot of flux going on, not only as you share the examples of Maplewood and other towns that are trying to work through this, but the timing of the federal aid. And now the answer is, the schedule is, is, is as it is, as they would say. So if it changes, that we can also take a little more extra time. But if, unless there's other feelings that we would have Jim go ahead and prepare a budget for introduction. And if he will key in three different numbers and change that. Okay. Very good. And we now move on to, there are no ordinances for hearing, so we will now move on to our second of invitations for discussion. I see people already raising their hand, so thank you very much again. Rules, for the most part, are the same as the last time when you are recognized, state your name, your address. And now this is not limited to the discussion item. You may comment on any topic. You have three, three minutes to, for, try to, comments into three minutes, but we'll give you a one-minute grace period. And also do not hesitate to raise your hand while it's, other people are talking. So right now, we'll call up Claire Whitcomb, state your name and address and share your comments.
Hi, am I unmuted? Okay, good.
Yep.
Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. Really briefly, Rachel, I really liked your comments on Geraldo Farms. I had just a question, whether the sewage treatment plant and that hundred and seventy thousand dollars and the repairs to the substation, whether they had any climate efficiencies involved? And if we were doing more than just a repair, were we investing in kind of a more sustainable future at the same time? We don't have to answer that now, but that's the kind of information I would find useful. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a quick response to that, that in particular in the project is the answer is no, but the, the process of processing the sewage will mean that a lagoon that had been previously used will be decommissioned and there may be opportunities for solar on-site and so that we will be looking at that, so there could be more to come. And now we'll bring up Tom Harlan Pudis.
Okay, Mayor, you hear me? Everybody?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Tom Harland Pudis, twenty-seven Palmeroy Road. I first want to start out wishing Jim's mother-in-law a happy birthday too. Jim, congratulations. Hopefully she is watching and I know she loves her son-in-law.
The knee replacement, Thomas, is a knee replacement, but I'll let her know. I'll let her know that she.
Oh, hip replacement. I thought you said a birthday.
Knee replacement. It's a birthday for her knee.
And then I want to give out a happy buck, pretending I'm in a row meeting, to the Madison High School hockey team. If the ma, I don't know if the mayor said this earlier because I came on five minutes late. They won the, the Menning County Halverson Cup last week on Thursday. So that's a pretty big accomplishment, especially during the COVID season. It was very hard to practice and have a consistent play schedule. So kudos to our borough athletes at the high school. So one thing, Mayor, I want to reiterate again that I asked you in the past is if you're already thinking about having a schedule for some town hall meetings where the residents can have more open discussion with you and our fellow council people, that I think that's a good idea because it's very difficult. To just give a presentation for four minutes to you and then get your mic turned off. And hopefully soon, we're going to be coming back to the town hall in person. It'd be great to have all of us being able to see each other with masks on and socially distanced. I wanted to ask Mayor if there is any update on the open space proposal made by some of the residents to install a paddle pickleball facility. I know that that's something that's going back and forth between the rec committee, open space and Borough Hall and these volunteers with the possibility of putting something at the pool. I think it would be a great addition to the borough's outdoor recreation and it would be highly utilized by the residents. Another thing I wanted to comment on, Jim, you did a great job with your budget presentation. And I'm not, I'm not anxious for us to have a zero tax percent increase. I'm not anxious for us to have a flat budget. I just want to understand better where everything's coming from. And the more that you present, I would say for myself, the more I understand why there is a need for that small tax increase to the borough's budget. And I'm not saying, Jim, that we shouldn't raise taxes if it's not necessary. And you do give a great explanation of all the challenges that we have. I want to comment too for the community, if I understand this correctly, and Mayor, you can confirm it when it's your turn to talk, that the county announced that they're not going to have any increase into their budget. So that will be some relief for all of us residents in our tax bill that we'll just be paying the same amount to the county. Last meeting, I, I followed up the presentation from the department heads and I asked about the status of replacing the retired firemen and policemen. I, I did comment that, you know, the number one priority in our borough is our safety. And if we're not properly staffed, we may not be as safe as we need to be to have the, you know, the number one best small town to live in, in the state. And was the, the budget for this year or is the budget for this year going to take into account the same staff that you had last year? So if you had fourteen people last year at X dollars, do you expect to have fourteen people this year at a little bit less than X dollars because the replacements to the retirees will cost us less?
And one minute, Tom.
Oh my gosh, you know, this is ridiculous that you limit people to four minutes to talk about things that are kind of important to the community, Mayor. One of these days, I'm going to be somewhere where I can actually help you make a change to that. And it didn't used to be like this. Anyway, I just wasted twenty seconds on that. I wanted to know if the borough has a good amount of money in reserves for uncollected taxes. So let's say we have tax appeals that Jim's projecting, although I don't know if they'll be this year or next year. Maybe he can also give us an idea if anybody's in the queue now. Can we use some of that money since it's so significant and we've never really used it before for uncollected taxes? Can we use some of that to repay the tax appeal money that we would owe retroactive back to the beginning of the year? Another thing is I wanted to know what would be the factor for new property taxes for some of the developments that you mentioned a little while ago, like the movie theater building, the new project on Kings Road and the amount of new homes that are going up in the borough, replacing smaller homes with tax bills that are two and a half times what the smaller homes are paying. So that's got to hopefully offset a little bit what we might lose from the commercial properties in the borough. And then Rachel took the words out of my mouth, which is great, Rachel, that you said that the Borough Master Plan Committee is trying to think creatively of different uses for the commercial properties in Geralda and around the borough.
And that time, I'm sorry.
All right.
So, and Jim can address some of these just to, and I appreciate all your comments. One, I want to thank you for the shout-out for the ice hockey team. I meant to have my comments, but in craziness, I forgot that. As, as you mentioned, we're all looking forward to getting back in, into public and doing these meetings in public. And so I said that I would announce how many people are attending the meetings and this is outside the panelists. And you can see that there are currently thirty-three attendees, which is about what we had at the beginning of the meeting. Paddle tennis, there are ongoing conversations about the location and the funding source. And, you know, creative minds are working for creative solutions related to that. I have also some common discussions about trying to, you know, do, as you said, a public comment, you know, town, the whole type meeting. So yes, that's being looked at. I will remind people that the county zero percent always comes with a little caveat. So the, the budget and the overall taxes they collect, their plan right now is to maintain zero percent. When you take in the equalization ratios, some towns may end up paying more and some towns may end up paying less. So we don't know where we will fall yet, but to be seen. The public safety, we are, yes, some vacancies of patrol and the fire department and so, and uncollected taxes. And Jim also has a, usually has a, had a separate line as far as the impact of new radals, ratables, which were minimal for this year. So Jimmy, if you wanted to comment on those last three items.
Sure, Mayor. So Thomas kind of touched on three different things. One is the tax appeal reserves, which we talked about. My concern is that the six hundred thousand dollars will be depleted and we may not even have enough once all the tax appeals are done. As Mayor Conley mentioned, it's not going to be in a year, but it could be in a couple of years. So that's a concern. He also mentioned the reserve, the, the uncollected tax, the reserve for uncollected taxes, a different line. It's the annual line that makes sure that we have a little bit of, that, that the amount that we send out for bills will cover the amount that we have to, that we have to give to the three different major budgets, county school board and municipal. So we have a seventy million dollar need for taxes. We have the one point eight billion dollar reserve that's added every year. And that, that, that gives us some cushion because we know not everyone is going to pay their taxes. And the third item, the mayor was a hundred percent right that there is a line item in the budget for, for the amount of, see if I can get to it really quickly there, for the property taxes on new ratables. It was much higher in previous years. It's, it's NA for math purposes because the number gets pulled up into the prior year. But last year, we had over a hundred thousand dollars. The year before that, we had over a hundred thousand dollars. This year, we have twenty-five thousand dollars. So that is money that we're getting for new ratables that, 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 like new construction. The, a construction of a small building, of a small ten apartment building is not going to, I don't think it's going to offset the amount that we're going to lose from the property taxes. Help, but I don't think it's going to.
And Jim, one more point that Tom Harold Pudis made was about our, are we replacing the personnel and the safety to?
Sure, yeah. And it's in the, the, the line item is in the budget. I think we're looking to accelerate the replacement. So the, the funds are in the budget for the replacement of the firefighter.
Great, thank you. And we are replacing the two policemen also.
That's correct. Yes, we have two police officers that we have to work on really hiring right away.
Right, okay.
Now we'll bring up Dennis Schreiber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm unmuted. I hope I am unmuted.
You're good. Name and address.
Oh, sure. Dennis Schreiber, Amelia Court. Jim Burnett brought up a lot of interesting points during his budget presentation. And I think he depicted a very, very dire situation. And with that in mind and that background, I would suggest that all items be cut from the budget except the absolutely essential, urgent projects. Save the taxpayers' money. Take the pressure off you guys. Just limit it to the essential projects and forget everything else. A perfect example is get rid of those stupid bump outs. They don't do any good. They cost a lot of money to install them. So get rid of them from the budget. Secondly, back to Councilwoman Ehrlich's point about Geraldo Farms. Here's an idea. Why don't we rezone it and put all the affordable housing obligations in there and right, and put them in there and not disrupt neighborhoods. Problem solved for everybody. Third and final point is Resolution eighty-seven, twenty-twenty-one. I think you did a very good job on short notice to come up with that resolution. I commend you all for that. However, I think you missed the mark and you fell short and need to go back to the woodshed and work a little bit more on refining. The, you need to protect the police so they can do their jobs and do the inspections and pull people over. If young kids are driving under the influence of either marijuana or alcohol, without the protection, protection of the police, the law won't be enforced and it'll all be for nothing. But I think you did a good job. I think you just need to take it a little bit further to include the law enforcement aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you very much. And related to that resolution, we will continue to monitor the, the progress and trend and you're right, we need to protect those who protect us. Michael Shagru.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, Jim, thanks for your.
Name and addresses, even though I, even though I didn't announce your name, but.
Weston Avenue, thanks, Mayor. Would like to thank Jim for his presentation. It was really detailed. There was something in the comment that, that you made, Jim, when, after Tom called in. And I have a question that relates back to the budget. So Tom asked about the firefighters. We need to replace two, not one. Astri mentioned that was being accelerated. That is excellent news considering we have not heard anything about accelerating the replacement of our firefighters. And the other piece I wanted to note, just for the public record, all over the budget, it says no change in service. Is there an asterisk for the fire department? Maybe there should be since we're so chronically understaffed. And what if one guy gets sick? What if we, our four of our members had COVID? Luckily, none of them were seriously ill. But what if one of them was out for six weeks or eight weeks? Then you're down to eleven career firemen for a twenty-four hour, you know, three sixty-five service. So I guess my, my rambling question is, it's great news that, that, that hiring will be accelerated. I'd love to know when that would be. And I will reiterate my offer, any member of council that would like to sit down with us and understand the needs of both the volunteer and the career fire department can do so. I made that offer two weeks ago and haven't heard anything from anyone on council. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Michael. Appreciate your comments and we'll have continued conversations. And obviously, we're working very closely with the chief to make sure we provide the fire, fire protection services. Now bring up Matt Keen.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, everybody. My name is Matt Keen. I'm actually from Chatham Township, but I have a home on Elm Avenue in Madison. I've been with the fire department for nineteen years. I have a business on Main Street as well. This usually isn't my forum where I would speak up, but I felt strongly enough being affiliated with the department for the past almost twenty years. That'd be worthwhile. First off, I just want to say thanks to the council and for the budget information and the transparency of it. There's a lot of thought and effort and it's not lost on me having like a four percent increase over that number of years is pretty impressive. So it's appreciated from a taxpayer standpoint. One of the most unique things about what Madison has is a combination department. I lived, lived in a number of different towns. And with a combination department, you have two paid firemen in the house at all times, at least from the hours of five PM until eight AM the next morning. Why that's so critical is that when a call comes in, you immediately dispatch the apparatus that's needed and we as volunteers can go directly from our home. When you're living in a community where you have all volunteers, you in theory have to drive by the incident, go to the firehouse, wait till you get a fully staffed truck and then drive back to the incident. It's just, the way I look at it from Madison is that you're in such a good position to have the response time of a fully paid department, but with only bearing the cost of a third of that, right? A budget's maybe two point seven million to put fourteen people on the payroll. And that number's been in place for the last twenty years. So it was definitely shocking to think that we would ever go back to where we are right now with twelve people, knowing where we've come in the past twenty years. And I think we can all agree, we didn't see any of this coming over the past twenty years in terms of some of the faces, some of the emergency services that we're required to face today. And I just think it's important. I think it's important to see the value in that having a paid department for the fourteen people, keeping that in place. Because I think it keeps everything across the board even, meaning the council's doing what your job is to be fiscally responsible. You're putting adequate coverage in the house. The residents benefit from an immediate response in under three minutes for any type of nine-one-one emergency. And if you've ever been on the other side of calling, having to call nine-one-one, every second counts. You're not making that call lightly. When you need to call, you need someone at your side as soon as possible, no matter where you are. Having that response with the budget in mind and having the staffing in place has been huge. And it's not, you know, the other thing too, for Chief DeRosa and with our former chief, Acheson, to be able to manage that combination, think about that workforce you have to have. You have to have volunteers and paid firemen working side by side. And that's also been in Madison's favor because the people that step up and volunteer are people that want to stay with this as a career. So there's an incentive there to continually hire and replace people that retire, getting qualified candidates that want to give back to your town. And first and foremost, they donate tons of their hours and times. And like Mr. Harold Pudis said last week, sometimes you can't even get people to volunteer to coach your local baseball team. It's, it's somewhat hard to find people that want to dive into this and have it be, you know.
One minute.
That's it. I just wanted to, I, I. That's it. I just wanted to, I guess I wanted to stress, you know, just the importance of it and the need for it. And at the end of the day, when, when we're talking about the budget and retiring to pay people that are at the top of their pay scales with the benefits, when you replace two, you're starting at the lowest tier and it takes them years to graduate to a full pay scale, you're still cutting that bill in half when you're starting off. So you're still saving the taxpayer money while maintaining a 14-person budget. I appreciate it, Jim, but in terms of, we could always get together and like Mike said, we should have open dialogue and get together and everybody should have a complete understanding of how the department works. That'd be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, both you and Michael, for your comments and insights on the dynamic of a career and volunteer fire department. And I want to thank you for your, for you stepping forward to serve the residents of Madison. At this point, I see no hands raised, so I will be closing this part of the meeting and one second here. And introduction ordinance is, will the clerk please read the statement?
Can never get that off. Okay. So the ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for March the 22nd, 2021 will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 12-2021 for the first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter 166 of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks to amend the sidewalk reimbursement program.
Johnny.
Mayor, I, I move ordinance 12-2021.
Second.
Any council discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
All right, we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 81-2021 to Resolution 87-2021.
And as noted, this includes the corrective legislation regarding underage possession by minors. And we will, the council will continue to monitor the progress of this in trend. John?
Yeah, I'm sorry, May, to interrupt, but on that red particular resolution, the governor, Senator Sweeney and Senator Branick have all come out saying that they will support eliminating penalties for the police department reporting it. So they're going to eliminate that.
That, that, thank you for that clarification and it's very good to hear. Any other comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business. Approval vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
For the current fund, it's $276,762.14. General capital fund, $2,086.80. Electric operating fund, $10,064.40. The electric capital fund, $1,005,021.12. For the water operating fund, $38,061.98. And for the trust, $190,558.43. The total is $622,554.87. Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
There is no new business.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank, thank you all. And all have a good night. Yep.
Good night.